I have exactly 7:00 PM, so I'm gonna start the meeting right here. We've got a few things to do tonight. One of them is going to be, everyone has received the Board of Appeals Meeting Minutes from September 15th. I hope you've had an opportunity to look at those, provide any comments on those, or approval to approve them as written. That'd be for the minutes.
Before you do that, your first order of business should be, Larry is still an alternate. If you want him to go down the minutes, you gotta appoint him as a voting member for today's meeting. He will be formally appointed by the Village Board to fill the Eric Pete Bowers' unexpired term, which is actually Bill Baker's unexpired term, next Thursday. But he's still technically an alternate today.
Fair enough. All right, getting back to everybody, at least on the board here, the three current members who can vote on that. We have another person who's going to be appointed to the board permanently, it sounds like. But for tonight, we want him to vote, that would give us four votes. And what we need is a motion to approve him as a voting member for tonight.
I make a motion that Mr. Hallby accepted on the board this evening as a full voting member.
Very good, so we have a motion on the table?
I second.
Seconded? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? None? Larry, congratulations.
Of course, next Thursday is premise on Larry actually wanting to continue. Sir, we're kind of assuming now. I have heard, the good news is that Pete's unexpired term ends in May. So you can back out in the end of May of 2023 if you want to.
Short timer. All right, and while we were doing that, I just wanna take a few minutes as the chairman to do a reflection, or at least a memory for Peter Bowers, who recently passed away. And he was on the planning and the zoning boards for 15 years. He gave great service to our community, and I just wanna take a minute or two to reflect on him and remember him. And if anyone's got any other comments, that's fine. It's okay, if we can just make sure that that's in the meeting minutes, I would appreciate that. All right, going back to the meeting minutes. Everybody has them, and I think Larry, you even have them, and I think you were here at the last meeting. So we can either approve them as written, or we can make a suggested modification
I make a motion to approve as written.
We have a motion on the floor to approve these as written?
Seconded.
Seconded? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? None? We have the meeting minutes approved as written. Okay, you should all have your agenda in front of you. The agenda looks something like review the minutes from 9:15, we've done that. The schedule matters are, we've got Peter Elder and Pam Elder here from 59 Dunning Avenue, and they seek to attach a front porch of somewhere around eight by, I think, 28. And what I'm gonna ask right now is for Peter, or Pam, or the person they brought with them to tell us about this, and what it is we wanna do, and what the variance would be for it. And I apologize, but yes, go up there and, but he will let you make the explanation, and we'll ask questions if you can.
No problem. My name's Richard Batisti, I'm with Favor Builders Inc. I'm here on behalf of Peter and Pam Elder at 59 Dunning Avenue, or Street, yeah, Avenue in the village. They're proposing to build an eight-foot-deep by 28-foot-wide front porch on their home. You have some plans there that show, depict what it will look like. It's in keeping with the character of the neighborhood. If you drive down that street, I'm sure you've seen many porches that look just like that. And I'm told by Peter that it was actually one on the home years ago. The people that he bought the home from must have taken it down, and right now there's just a, basically a stoop with some steps they go into. So we're seeking relief from the, we're asking for a variance that allows the setback to be a little bit closer to the road than the code allows. But if you look, as I said, it's in keeping with the character of the neighborhood. If you actually look down the line, this porch would line up with many other porches that are down the street from it. That's basically it. Any questions that they have to answer?
Couple of questions. All right, what is the setback on the house right now, Peter?
Actually, I don't know the actual feet for the setback.
I do have a map here now. I believe it's 20, this shows it as 21 feet. I don't have my glasses, so...
The setback at the front of the house is 21 feet, because I thought that's what we were asking for.
This serves, looks like it's 27 feet.
And by extending it out about eight feet, it puts you just a little bit under 28 feet, right? That's with the, two second questions. The house was built when?
1890.
1890, so it's a couple of years old.
When it was originally built, it did have a front porch on it. We think it was probably taken off in like the 20s or 30s when it was made a duplex. It spent about half its life as a duplex and half its life as a single family. But the porch we're putting on is hopefully similar to the one that was there when it was first constructed, but there's really no good pictures of the house when it was first built.
I understand. One other question, what didn't, what wasn't clear to me in the pictures that we had was, is this gonna come straight out along the edges of the house?
Yes, it's gonna be, the width of the porch is gonna be the same as the width of the wall.
That answered my question, thank you.
This is gonna be one of the rare times where I have no question.
Can we get that in the meeting minutes, please?
Well, I walk the street, I mean, I live right around the corner from the street. It's absolutely in keeping with the neighborhood. The other houses on the street are in the exact same situation. They're all close to the sidewalk, it's close to the street, and this would not in any way negatively affect the neighborhood, and I am a huge proponent of front porches.
Front porches.
It's far not concerning.
Other thoughts or comments or questions? I have none.
All right, so where it says, again, the map is, the one at least I got, is so small I can't read.
I couldn't read it either.
I have a larger map here, I have no clue what it really says. But I think it says, street line is your property line? Is the street line the same as the right-of-way line? And is that, is that where, is that the same as his property line? You'd have to really look at your deed to know where your property line is. Some of them actually start in the center of the right-of-way, others start, others start at the edge of the right-of-way.
It starts, according to, according to the map that I've ever seen, and I have studied with Jake about this a number of times, yours starts in the center of the street and ends with backwards. So, because the house is really old.
Well, Gus, and we had at the last meeting, I'm gonna minutes reflect this. The, one thing that needs to be changed in the village zoning board is, is code, is the front yard is measured from the property line. It specifically says property line, not street line, not right-of-way line, but property line. And everybody's property line can be different. So if yours actually goes to the right of way, or to the center of the road, you actually add another 30 feet, so really your setback is, right now, 47 feet, you know? So the last one, we couldn't figure out where the property line was, so they decided, well, we're gonna call the street line the property line. Because that person didn't have their deed, and didn't really know what their deed said.
I do have a larger survey map, but if you wanna look at it.
Well, that probably won't help either.
But it does say exactly what you're saying, it's 30 from the center line and then 27.
Right, because the Dunning Avenue is a 60-foot right-of-way. But that's something that's gotta be changed, because depending on where you are, like if you live in the, and it only really messes up the older houses in the village, which typically are measured from centers or right-of-way. Like if you're in the Shands Street, you're just Latin so-and-so of a subdivision, as shown on a subdivision map. And so there, it's easy to determine whether property line, and it isn't into the street or anything like that. So it's just another quirky thing, probably, on the work, so to speak.
So is it fair to say that sidewalk in the village is not necessarily in the right-of-way? Or it could be on their property line, or can I assume that the sidewalk would never be on my property, but would be in the right-of-way?
Usually they're in the right-of-way, so is there, is there a sidewalk in front of your house?
Yes, both sides.
On both sides? And there's some grass in between the edge of the sidewalk and the pavement line?
Yes.
So that would indicate that there's an easement for the sidewalk going through the property?
Exactly.
No? The sidewalk is part of the, is part of the 60-foot right-of-way. Because if you mentioned the pavement of Dunning Avenue, I don't think Dunning Avenue was paved 60 feet wide.
No, no. So this is the same problem that we have on our...
So you actually, you own that little strip of grass, but it's subject to the right-of-way?
The grass in between the sidewalk and the road?
Right.
Yes. Yeah, we own, yes.
That's why I'm saying the sidewalk, there's an easement for the sidewalk for the property, that's the deciding.
Right, it's not a separate sidewalk easement though, it's just the general right-of-way for the road itself too. But the only reason I bring up this, so you can figure out is the distance of the variance that you wanted. So I guess we'll call it, to be consistent with what you did last month, do it from the street line you asked for. Even though that's not really what the code says.
And for the record, I have no objection to you there. I'm just not sitting up there because I have to... I agree with Don, it's...
I think we should probably change it to the right, to the right-of-way line.
Yes, I agree.
Not to the property line.
Yes, in this way.
So what happened, in this one, the right-of-way line is the same as the street line?
Okay.
Because Don...
Yes.
In fact, the surveyor probably should have put right-of-way line instead of street line.
That's what, that's what...
Because the pavement doesn't go all the way up to the...
Right.
It's a math thread. The street line. Yes, so the street line is the right-back.
So what would you, what would you recommend, or what would be your first thing? And I ask you to keep a couple of things in mind. Whatever we're going to recommend, if we are gonna recommend something for approval, think about what has to be rewritten in this set of codes, and how are we going to create What I don't wanna do is I don't wanna create another problem.
Well, that's a discussion we'll have after this affirmation is done. No sense holding on.
But if we, if we could address it ahead of time, and give it enough...
To me, I think, I think that the setbacks should be measured from the right-of-way line. And then the rest of the code needs to be changed, because having, requiring 40-foot front setbacks is probably way too much. So those should be lessened, so you don't have as many variance applications.
So what are you gonna recommend?
Well, I would recommend they stick with the street line or the right-of-way as the front property line, and then all setbacks are subject to that line.
All right, so now, sit with me and tell me, what is the street line now?
For this?
Yes, is that this, was that one side of the sidewalk, or the other side of the sidewalk?
It's probably on, well, I mean, I don't know.
Or is that the curb?
Well, no, this would probably be somewhere behind the sidewalk, or on the back edge of the sidewalk.
Or on the back edge of the sidewalk, we're not sure.
Right.
Because the map, he didn't draw the sidewalk on the map, so we don't know.
But generally, I would say, you know, if the Dunning Avenue is 60 feet wide, and you got a 20, 2-foot wide road, you got 11 feet on either side of the center line, and then you have your tree lawn area, which is that little stretch of lawn between the sidewalk and the street.
Which is usually about six or eight feet.
Correct. So then the sidewalk is generally five feet wide, so it probably either pretty darn close to that street line line, or the right-of-way line, as we normally call it.
Okay, so as a, as a third piece of this, regardless of what we approve here, can we add words to that approval, and say regardless of any changes, this is approved ahead of time for any changes that may occur to those lines?
Well, I don't think anything's gonna change to this property. I mean, this is the way the survey did it back in...
But what I was trying to say was, it'll still be approved and nobody has to come back and try and do something.
Right. Are we pre-existing nothing for me once, once you're approved tonight?
Yeah, any zoning changes are prospective only, not retroactive.
So what would be your, is there any comments or thoughts?
I think since we don't know exactly where the property line is, for purposes of the variance, we're gonna assume that the street line or right-of-way line is the property line.
Well, based on that survey right here, I agree. That's what the sub, or the surveyor drew. There's the street line is the right-of-way line, which is the front property line.
Well, I mean, that, the only way you can tell the front property line is to look at the deed. Because I bet you, and Peter thinks, if you read his deed, it probably says it's X number of feet from the intersection, the center lines of Elm Street and Dunning Avenue, X number of feet, and then it says it'll go 30 feet. It probably measures it from the center line.
It's a little more complex, because it was on Elm Street when the house was built.
Yeah, but that's your role. We're gonna assume, we're just gonna assume that the property line is the right-of-way.
And I think those are the numbers they base it off.
Whether or not, whether or not, that's a fact, because we don't have sufficient information to determine where the property line is. Although, if somebody, if somebody wanted to and has a laptop or a smartphone, you go on the county clerk's website, we can pull up your deed right now if you wanted to. But I don't want to. So last time, we did the same thing last month. We didn't know where the property line was, so we assumed it was the, this, the right-of-way line, and you did the variance from there. So just do the same thing.
So do we have to put into the variance that we're assuming that that is the property line, and it stays there regardless of anything that happens to the code or regulation?
Yeah, well, you don't need to say anything about that, because again, it's, any change can't be...
The changes can't be changed.
Can't be retroactive. It runs, if you grant the variance, it runs with the lane. It's, for as long as the house exists, the variance will be there.
Go ahead, give it a shot.
Well, the first thing, and again, we're gonna have to, since Larry is now sitting in Bill Baker's shoes, he's going to be, he's gotta be the seeker person, because we always get Bill do that. But you gotta do, it's a type 2 action, you gotta just take a quick...
Yeah, no, I recognize we've got to do the seeker review.
Oh, I thought you were, because I thought you were looking at the amount of variance that...
Well, I am trying to get them to think about the motion, but if we've come to that point where we don't have any issues associated with this, and it looks like we're going to have this go forward the way that it should to, to be able to build that wonderful front porch, then what about the seeker for this? And I'm looking for a motion one way or the other.
Again, variances by definition in the seeker regulations are type 2 action, which by definition means there is no significant environmental impact associated with it.
So I make a motion that this property, or this is a type 2 seeker action.
Perfect, we've got a motion on the table, that this be a seeker type 2 action. Do we have another? Okay, do we have a second on that?
Second.
Seconded, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? None? All right, perfect, we've gone that way. Second thing that I wanna do here is I wanna give somebody some comments, some chance to, to go through with some comments.
Richard Waller, 20 Elm Street. I just wanna praise Mr. Elder for spending the money and the time to do this project, to improve the look of the neighborhood, and to restore it to its historical condition, because, and I know what it's gonna be costing him, because I myself just rebuilt my porch, new deck and new roof, and this is gonna be more. So I wanna praise Mr. Elder for improving the neighborhood. Thank you.
Well done, thank you, and I would praise him.
Don't worry, the town association will find out. The code, it's not a creative, because they had an active form in front setback, but they took that off.
Right, we measure from the right setback. All right, so for purposes of the variance, as far as the distance...
Do it from the street line, you're saying, which would be called...
Something's a math problem.
Following up that the street line has identified on this particular drawing that you have, likely nobody can change that.
All right. I'm trying to formulate, because I was looking through this document.
It's all right. No more public...
Don't wait, don't be so... Somebody else can do it. I'm just trying to formulate something. So pretty much the whole conforming thing, because he's already 13 feet. Into the setback.
Definitely is. 40 feet, he's 13 feet and... But I didn't need any addressing, because that was existing, you were...
So he's already, yeah, it's 22, he's gonna be 81. He's maybe 21 feet or 27.
Well, the current application says 19 feet of the front property line.
Right, that's a 40-foot setback. He doesn't have, he's not at 40 feet setback, he's at 27.
So what's, just on the map that you have in front of you, now just use that as property
So what's the depth of the porch?
Eight feet. So it's basically, he's asking for, you would have a 19-foot setback to make from the right of way. If you, if you started at 40, he needs a three-foot variance. But if he's starting at 27, he needs a eight-foot, or he needs an eight-foot variance into the 27-foot setback, leaving him with a 19-foot setback.
That's it?
Yeah, what I said, John, that's remotion.
Did you get that? Does that make sense?
Does that work for you?
Yeah, I believe so. Yeah, 19 foot from...
I mean, if we set off side, all this stuff right here, what we're, what we're getting ready to do is say, yep, put 8 feet on front of that house as a porch, and that seems to make a lot of sense.
Yes, that's all we need.
And then, you know, in our mind, it takes it back to the existing, or the original property, or somewhere along the line in the earlier days. It puts back the porch that was taken off, and it really doesn't change much long-term as it happens. And then we're gonna set the variance so that it's in place, should anything change on these.
Yeah, that'll, because like you said, it's 27 feet now from the right-of-way porch.
So it's 87, right? If you had 19 feet off the right-of-way for the structure...
So, yeah, so just phrase the resolution that, that the variance is granted to allow a 19-foot front setback from the right-of-way.
And I'm okay with that. I would have said an eight-foot porch on the existing structure as it sits.
But that's not a, that's not a variance, trying to phrase it ahead.
Well, I, certainly that rule we wanted to do, but I understand that, yes.
Normally what you do, they didn't have 40 feet to begin with. Normally, it would be a variance where a 40-foot setback is allowed. Now you're gonna allow, you gotta do subtraction from 40 feet, not from 27 feet. But they never had 40 feet.
They never had.
So rather than do it that way, just allow a 19-foot...
Understood.
...front setback from the right-of-way line, which we're, which is presumed to be the property. And, and even though it was advertised, I don't think they need a variance for a side setback, because it's not, it's not being built into the side yard.
That was my question, does it stop at the existing frame of the house?
Well, right now, the side yard is, is between the building, the existing building, the house, not, not the house after you put a porch in it, but the existing house. So it doesn't need a side setback.
Side setbacks, they're not changing.
Right, the side setback, well, it's not being built into the side yard anymore.
Okay, so we need a motion now?
Yeah, if we can do that.
All right, let me pick a crack at this, John. All right, so I would like to make a motion to allow... All right, so I would like to make a motion to allow the elders to, in the favor consortium, to construct an eight by 28 foot front porch, a foot out from the front of the porch, encroaching into the existing 27 foot setback, such that you end up with a 19 foot setback from the street line, which we are accepting in this instance to be the right of way.
And that's the street line as identified on?
Street line, and we're calling it, we're accepting it as commonly referenced right of way.
Comments or questions on that? Corrections? Okay, so we're looking for, um, do we have a second on that? A second there. Seconded by Larry. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed? None. Perfect.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
It was a lot of work, but thank you.
Well, if we're so consistent, then it would be a resentful. Or not.
Okay, also, um, what you guys, I think you guys have, maybe you don't have. But, um, we talked at at the last meeting? Yeah, we talked at the last meeting about some of our notes regarding the proposed changes uh, to the codes. One of the things, all right, so.
They have the same thing, Mark.
All right. So we're looking at the zoning codes to consider for review. 175-59A accessory structure, some of the definitions, some of the district regulations, some of the district regulations for side yards, and so on and so forth. Then the signs, the billboards, the lighting, again, the definitions as the coding and that. And these all came from the last meeting?
Last couple of meetings.
Last couple of meetings we talked about these.
The one on top, the accessory structures, that was just revised, but I typed it up from you because it won't be in your code books yet. So I wanted you to have the most current wording for that one.
And our point on this is to recommend that, that the change take place. We don't make the change. Women have the final authority, the, the village board does. So in any of those, I do have some of the comments or some of the put in the accessories structures, comments associated with that that we want to take tonight. And the comment would be, the comment would be either change it, or accept it as it is, or, and get it back off to the report. Questions at Bob Thomas? I mean, if we're not ready to make a decision or path going forward, we can take that off. But we're gonna have to make a decision on this relatively quickly, which means we're gonna have to, we're gonna have to meet either ourselves for next meeting, November. But the meeting would be to do nothing, as, as far as I know, there's nothing for that meeting yet on books. So we would have that meeting to address these, and that would give you some time to review them, if you could need more time. Including the definitions.
I'm not sure I like the wording. For 175-59A, it says, buildings, accessory buildings shall have a maximum size of 192 square feet. Or 1% of gross land area, whichever is less. Okay, so.
Do you remember what this is about? This is about the shed?
Yes.
Okay.
So. I have a lot that's 175 by 50. That's 8,750 square feet. 1% of that is 87.5 square feet. That's the ma, I can't. If you, if you keep.
Then it goes down, it says 120.
120 foot accessory structure.
120 square foot accessory structure allowed regardless of lot size.
Okay. But what if I want 192? You can't have a 192?
No.
You'd have to have a variance.
Not as it's written now, you have to do a variance.
Right.
Yeah. And we, I think everyone kind of sort of agreed is 16 by, 192, 16 by 12. I mean, that's a good size, it's not overly huge, but it's big enough for everything in today's, for all of toys. So, it says 50, 20, 25. Just trying to second.
No, it's totally fine.
If you knock it up to 2%, you can get up to 175 square feet, which is
For you, though.
Yes.
I have three quarters of an acre.
Yes.
And I could probably get a
But that's why, that's why the whichever is less.
Yeah, he says that then your 192 kicks in.
192 or 1% of the grocery, whichever is less.
Yes. I think the less is.
Or you can take out. You can take out the 1% and you could just say 192 square feet, vary it. Regardless of the size getting larger or smaller.
Right.
That would maximize that structure size, and that would standardize it across the board.
How deep's your lot?
175. Right, and the house is five, towards the front of the lot.
This isn't nearly like 60 by 100 for lots?
Right, there's, there's a lot smaller ones, you know, now you're, now you're gonna allow 112 by 16. That's what I don't, no matter the size of the lot. Yeah, it may not seem humongous on yours, because you got 175 feet going back.
Right.
But someone that's only got 100 feet going back, by 60 feet wide, I think if you do anything, and I think the town, the town changed it from 1% to 2%, yeah.
And what's up with that?
So, if, if you do anything, you change that percentage.
Right. Although on the smaller lots, then there's no way you're gonna be able to plot a 192 in there without getting setback areas.
That's why, oh, you're right. But they're, they'd be allowed 120 square foot structure. No matter the size of the lot. If they wanted to go bigger.
Someone would have to go to the variance process.
They're gonna have to go to the variance process, you know? Sometimes, you know, if you got a small lot, you can't just allow, or we change the
Big things.
Small lots, you know, some, some of them may be appropriate.
Or you might change the minimum, like the 120 to like 144, 12 by 12.
We can make any recommendation that we want to, if it makes sense. I mean, that, that's really what, what I, what I would like to see us come out of here with is, whatever we come up with, it makes a rationale, or it makes a reason for, for, and you say why.
Well, I guess it depends on, if you think a 10 by 12 shed in this day and age is just way too small. Then maybe you do what Mike suggested, you go 12 by 12, 144. And then you leave the 1% to 1%.
Right, that's my guess.
Well, if you leave the 1%.
Yeah, because then they would take care of the smaller, but it gives them a
Well, they can at least have a 12 by 12.
Right. I mean, I bought, I got a shed and then I didn't get a variance, so I have a 10 by 10. I want the 192 square foot shed now.
What if I have a 100, or a 200 by 200 square foot lot?
192.
Yeah, 192.
60 by 12, what about 200 by 300? By the way, it's not unusual to find that up in the shed track.
Right?
Yeah, but then the max size kicks in.
The max size kicks in. So, so you build the 144 automatically, you hit it down.
Right.
Provided that it still needs side yard setbacks. If you've got a large piece of property, you can go to a maximum of 192 feet, and they can do that.
Yes.
And if they want to have 250 or 300 square foot garage in their backyard, come on in and talk to us, they probably won't approve that.
Right, right.
So what I'm hearing is 144 for 12 by 12 for almost any size lot.
And if it's fair.
All right, and when do you kick above the 144? And what, what do you kick above 144?
I mean, you have to have a lot that's bigger, you know.
Agree.
Somebody's gotta do the arithmetic, right here, how big a lot? 1% of X equals, you know, 145 or whatever the odd.
Yeah.
Have to have my algebra.
The 200 by 200 square foot lot up in the, up in the shed track.
Yeah, if you had a 200 by 200 square foot lot, 1% of that area would be 400 square foot.
So you limit the 192?
Right, so then the 192 takes over.
Right.
Unless you wanna push for 400, then you gotta go to the variance.
I'm, I'm more along the lines of limiting it. And if 192 is the square foot limit, then put it down. And make that be the recommendation that we put forward to the board. And we can, we can certainly go to them and tell them why. And that makes a little bit of sense.
Because I mean, if somebody wants to do a 192 on a tiny lot, then they have to go through the setbacks processes to try and get it
Right, but they can do 144, they can do 144 right now, regardless.
Right.
If we change it.
If we change this.
Well, uh, no, 144.
Is 12 by 12.
If it fits within the setbacks.
Agreed, but the setbacks are gonna kick in regardless of where you are. They're gonna set, they're gonna kick in at the large lots and the small lots. They're still gonna sit there, aren't they?
No, if you had a 200 by 200 square foot lot, you wanna put 100 square foot structure on there? I think you can stay 10 feet off the property lines.
Yeah, but
We change it, you only have to stay 5 feet off.
Now it's 5.
Oh, 5.
I can slide, I can slide mine over 5 now, and I can upside it.
Right.
Or do you recommend that it not be 5 feet? We just change it to 5 feet?
5 feet is good. 5 feet is good. Oh, I'm good with the 5. And I'm, 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 I'm good with changing the 120 to 144, and leaving the 1%. I'm good with that.
All right, let me ask, let me ask one final question here to get my mind kind of straight. Our playhouse is exempt. Because I'll tell, I will define the playhouse I built in the backyard. I used nine 4x4 posts sunk in concrete. And I truly did build the playhouse. There was a door, there was no door on it, there was the open windows side for the kids to climb in and out. And there was a sandbox attached to the front of it. It was not. And I never put the lawnmower, the snow blower, or anything in it.
Right, see, so you're not, it's not a storage building.
No, it was not.
Right, so that's just an open structure.
So, again.
Well, it 175-59, it, it, it doesn't say sheds anywhere in there, it says accessory structure.
Well, it said accessory, right, but then, and then it says private garage and then accessory buildings.
Right.
So what is the definition?
The definition of an accessory building is a building, the use of which is customarily incidental to that of the main building, and which is located on the same lot. So that would include playhouses, so.
Playhouses was listed in our regulations someplace, and I can't remember where.
As exempt?
Why, why shouldn't it be?
Yes, as being exempt, they did not, and I think it was
So you could stick a 900 square foot playhouse in your backyard and you don't, you could just do that as a
Right, define a playhouse.
Well. Nobody does, they're not, nobody in any zoning code I've ever read defines, has special regulations for playhouses. It's an accessory structure.
Well, certainly definitely a structure if you're seeking, I agree.
There's, there's no
As a foundation.
There's no definition in the Village of Webster's zoning code for playhouse. It's, it's an accessory building. It's incidental to the main use.
I'm okay with it, I'm just, I'm, I'm telling you what I did.
Well, how big was it?
Um, it was easily 12 by, 12 by 8. And then the sandbox was another 12 by 8.
Oh, sandbox.
I had six kids, for God's sake.
Sandboxes aren't considered a building.
Right, that's not.
So, forget the sandbox.
Okay, if I forget the sandbox, it was fairly large because I had the front porch on it.
Was it, so, well, it's not bigger than, well, it wasn't bigger than
I don't think it was bigger than 12 by 12. I think it was more like 8 by 8.
Well, so you wouldn't, you didn't need a variance, that was. Same difference if you put a shed up, they had same setback, you wouldn't need a variance. You just put the playhouse.
Oh.
But it's still an accessory building. There's no exceptions for playhouses.
Agreed, and, but, but I kind of liked where we were in the early part, was 144 or up to, if you're over the 1% or whatever the, the percentage is, you go to 196 for those lots. Anything outside that range, you get a you get a variance for it. And by the way, we've already set, or somebody has set, or they're thinking about setting, 5 foot for the side yard or the backyard setback. Does that make sense to come forth as a recommendation? I mean, Larry, you had a few kids.
The only change is we'll change it from 120 to 144. Everything else stays the same.
Yep.
It already is a 5 foot setback, the village board did this about a month or so ago.
So on the 175-3, where it says setbacks question not defined, it's now defined?
No. We haven't defined. And I just think all these, well, the front yard. So I think just front yard, instead of, instead of saying the front property line, you've gotta say the
Right.
Front right of way line. You know, rear yards go to the property.
Mm-hmm, from the house to the rear property.
Right, between the rear wall of the building and the rear line of the lot.
Right, between the rear wall of the building and the rear line of the lot, which is property line, I should say property. And then side yard, between the building and the sideline of the lot extending from the front to the rear yard, which goes to the board. And that goes to the side property lines, so rear and sides are to the property lines. The one, the one thing about the side yard, you want to leave it that it's got to be unoccupied. You know, we have the deck and the pool in the side yard. So, you want to leave it as unoccupied.
Yes, I would say yes.
I'd say yes.
Yeah, that makes sense.
Typically, nothing in the side yard.
A five foot open bucket. Unrestricted bucket.
So, anyone that wants to put a pool in their side yard, again, they have to come through here.
Correct, right. That's closer to five.
So, we're going to, we're going to recommend that the one twenty get moved out to one hundred and forty-four, which would accept a twelve by twelve.
Right.
Are you going to, are you going to have a height restriction on that?
No, I, I would say twelve feet at max, ten to twelve, ten feet maybe.
For height?
Yeah, because I don't want...
Do most, is Penfield a high restriction?
Yeah, I think it's twelve feet. I looked at all these codes today, and nobody has shed sets in Penfield.
Webster does. I didn't bring, I didn't, the town just changed, I hate me about that.
I think they have a height of twelve, too.
Do you want a twelve foot restriction?
No, why? Let me throw this out, because, okay, exactly, it's my, my house, I have an eleven twelve inch roof. All right? So, eleven twelve would basically, let's say, if it was twelve twelve, it's basically, and my house is twenty-five or twenty-four feet tall, twenty-four feet wide, it's twelve feet tall to the roof, so two stories, so ten, twenty, thirty-two feet. If I build a garage that's twelve foot deep and sixteen feet wide, I don't want a flat little four twelve pitch roof, I want the roof in keeping with the pitch of the house, so that they look homogeneous. So...
But don't we have a definition for, for accessory structure the same as a garage? Because I think you got to have a restriction, otherwise you're going to get double story sheds that somebody's going to put a playhouse on top of the shed. I mean...
No, I know, it could be, it could be a two story shed.
There's definitions for...
Garage attached and...
Garage private, but none of them say anything about height.
Right.
So, I, I personally, I would say the roof pitch can be no greater than the existing pitch of the existing home.
I don't know, let's, let's, we add while, while he's doing the math on us. As we've got kids, how much of a height do we want? Well, you can accept, you can, you know, for the height, you can have the height only apply to accessory structures and not to garages. Because it says no garage shall be more than six hundred square feet in the area. And then it goes on, and all accessory buildings shall have a maximum size, so it distinguishes between garages and accessory buildings. So, we can have a height restriction for accessory buildings, but not necessarily for garages.
I think there is someplace where there's a height requirement. In somewhere around here, I recall, because some of the old barns in the village are twenty-something feet long. If you look at...
It's not under accessory building, and it wasn't under garage. It's not under...
Do you have a word on that?
Well, of course not. Well, I don't know, my guess is, is that any existing barns in the Village of Webster are pre-existing natural forms.
Yeah, it doesn't matter.
You know, because who's putting up a barn in the village these days? There's no room for barns.
I don't, yeah.
A couple of questions. One thing I'll mention is if you go over to Home Depot, there is a two story shed there for sale. So, that is a, a question you'd want to consider. Also, I would like to know on an accessory structure, what's the definition of their usage? They're now advertising them on TV that you build basically an office in it or an auxiliary bedroom? Do we have anything that defines them as a storage facility? Is it that written, or is it, can I build one in the backyard and put my office out there, heat and air conditioning and make a full-time office? Or man cave?
To conduct business?
Huh?
To conduct commerce? You wouldn't be able to, you...
My, my private office to do my own paperwork, you know, a home office, a den. Is there any definition as what they can be used for? Can I put an auxiliary guest, guest bedroom out there?
Yes, there is a definition of accessory use.
Okay. It does limit it to storage?
No. No, because people, they have accessory uses in their house, in their, the main building in their home.
Yeah.
Like, you can have a doctor's office, you can have a lawyer's office, you can have a home office, and most people these days, working out of their house, that those are all accessory uses, that you don't want to limit to storage.
Well, accessory structure you're talking about, which would be an additional structure to the house...
It says, an accessory use may be, may be conducted in the main building or in an accessory building. But such use shall not occupy a floor area greater than three hundred square feet. There shall be no commercial display visible from the street or advertising, except for a small professional nameplate or announcement sign not larger than two squares feet in area. Now, since, since your sheds are limited to one hundred ninety-two square feet, I doubt somebody's going to want to put an office in one of those. It's kind of small. But they can, but there's no advertising for it. If they want to have their customers or their clients walk into their backyard, God bless.
I can build a shed, I can...
I don't know why somebody would want to put it in a twelve, a twelve by sixteen shed when they could probably more easily do it inside their house.
I just wondered if there's any real limit, because we may see other usage coming up.
Such as what?
Gee, instead of parking my trailer in my yard and putting the out of town relatives to stay there, which we get away with in this, in the village, I can build a addition and let the out of town relatives come spend the summer with me out in the nice bedroom in the backyard.
It's an accessory building. And if you want to build a twelve by, if your, if your lot's big enough, a twelve by sixteen building to let your relatives live there, that's not prohibited, it's the same as the playhouse. The accessory buildings aren't limited to storage.
Yeah, but they, you couldn't build, you couldn't create an in-law unit, because then you would be subject to all building codes.
Right, right, it's a practical matter, you're not going to have somebody live in a shed, even on a temporary basis. You know, there's no bathroom, there's no lots of stuff, you know? You probably have to get a C of O, and no, you're not going to get granted a certificate of occupancy.
Once my shed's up, who knows what's in it?
Well, well, the town of Webster's height is ten feet.
If somebody wants to invade the existing laws, there's no way you can, you're not going to break any law. If somebody wants to break a law, they're going to break a law.
Ten feet?
Yep.
All right, so if I build a building that's sixteen feet wide, and I'm only about ten feet, that means I got a two foot pitch?
Two foot pitch, I mean, it's a...
It's crazy.
That's what the town of Webster has in their home.
And the roof is going to be not a roof, right? That we know of only. I think we can, we can say...
I can raise twenty?
Yeah. I would, I think that's...
I agree, I, that's more of a rule, maybe, I don't know.
All right. So, if we, if you build a sixteen foot wide accessory structure, sixteen by twelve, with a, and I mean, unless you build, and you say the maximum roof slope is twelve twelve, then you get eight feet, so eight feet, assuming your wall below eight feet, that gives you sixteen foot height. Say, so I would say, okay, the maximum peak height is sixteen feet.
And I would accept that.
And nobody, nobody wants to build twelve twelve, because that's, that's not a roof.
I just don't want these behemoth things sticking out in the backyard.
I would rather be restrictive of it.
Right. I mean, maybe it's...
What would you say, fourteen?
Twelve.
Twelve?
I wouldn't go any more than sixteen.
You know what I would say? The roof pitch of your accessory structure should be in keeping with the roof pitch of your existing home, but never to exceed twelve twelve.
Yeah, but most of these people are buying these sheds from Amish or whatever, they're pretty, they're never going to match your pitch of your roof or...
Okay, but then they, so then the twelve twelve?
I would say nothing more exceeding more than that distance, that would determine.
And what was that? So, is D?
I think...
What's the margin? Oh, I would say eighteen.
Oh, you mean the roof?
No.
Yeah.
I know. I need to do more research.
Get a number. I don't think accessory building walls exceed the top.
Well, if we, if we think about twelve feet, think, if you could think about that for a second, what size shed at one hundred ninety-two feet would that put up? Assuming square or rectangle?
Sixteen by twelve.
Sixteen by twelve?
Yeah.
So, that would be six feet on each side, if you did it that way. Could be.
Oh, you're saying if it was twelve feet wide and sixteen foot deep? I'm saying how, what, what if I'm sixteen feet wide and twelve foot deep? And my roof is, so I, I want a, I want a garage door at the front on the long edge of the door.
I get you. I mean, if we, if we put everything aside for just a moment and say, we want to allow the shed, sheds to be in the backyard, we've limited their size based on the size of the property, at one hundred and forty-four feet or one hundred and ninety...
Two.
Or six, two?
Right.
Okay. So, at that point, you can put down the height, you can request, you can put down the, the general, I mean, you could do square or rectangle. You can put that down and limit everything else, and you can limit the height. You could, you could, you could code that in.
Right, that's what we're saying, what, what's, what's the acceptable maximum height to the peak? Because there are lots of different roof structures that you can build.
So, I, I just looked at two sheds, one at Home Depot, one at Lowe's, and they're twelve by twelve, they have like seven foot high walls, and the tallest to the peak is, uh, I think it's only ten feet, ten something.
So, it's three.
So, it's pretty shallow.
Right, they're all shallow roofs.
They're probably four twelve pitches.
Yeah.
Which is the minimum for a shell roof.
And that's... So, do we say twelve feet is the maximum height, because?
Well...
If you're going to build that structure, if you're building an accessory structure, I want, I want my attic space...
Building this.
Ten point zero four.
Why, I'm building it, I'm building it in my backyard.
Well, you might be building it, but most, everybody else is going to go to Home Depot or Lowe's, or the Amish can go buy one. Yes, so they're just going to get what they're going to get. They just need to measure and make sure that the height is less than twelve feet.
Wow, so restrictive.
So, if you're going for a variance, you're trying to save these people that...
Oh, I'm going to try to avoid the variance process.
Well...
Because I, I mean, if I could, what if I want to build this accessory structure and I want to use that attic process?
Well, what the town did is very confusing. Because on one, it says, it says, no accessory building shall be higher than the main structure. So, you could build it as tall as your house.
Webster.
Yeah, Webster, then it says, in no circumstances shall the zoning district maximum height be exceeded, which is usually higher than your host houses. But then it says, the height will be determined at the location of the accessory structure, I don't know what that means. And then it says, in no circumstance or event shall such building exceed twenty feet in height. But they, before they said I could build it as high as my house.
That's the town of Webster.
Yeah. So, it seems like they got two different things there. You build it as high as your house or twenty feet, it doesn't say whichever is less. It apparently allows both. And what are you looking for, more than twelve or no? I guess in case you got houses that are less than twenty feet in height, let's see what we'll see.
Sixteen, twelve?
I think you do, just pick a number, twelve feet, fourteen feet, sixteen feet, pick a number. I think if twelve is too restrictive?
Oh, I think twelve is too shallow.
Amperance, how about fourteen? Great between sixteen and twelve. Can you tie it, while you're, while you're looking at, can you tie it to the width and the length? So, in other words, if you're going to be...
Well, if you're going to do that, then you just mandate the maximum pitch of the roof line.
Right.
You're saying the roof cannot exceed eight twelve pitch. And then that determines, so the width of your building, whatever direction the roof is going, is, says, whatever that width of the building is, and you say the pitch shall not exceed six twelve, then you know that's going to give you a maximum dimension for that width. So, it really depends on the structure, if you're building a twelve by sixteen and you're running the roof in the twelve foot direction, then you know six twelve will get you six, three feet. So, now, assuming your walls are eight, you're at eleven feet. But if you're building it sixteen wide and twelve foot deep, six twelve will give you, oh, eight? Six, sixteen by, uh, four feet, so that will give you seventeen, oh, three feet.
So, again, here's a sixteen by twelve shed from one of the local stores, and they have the peak is ten point zero four feet. Because they have the walls starting at seven feet.
So, maybe we're getting ridiculous, talking about an eight foot high wall.
Right, because they're doing, they're doing seven foot high walls.
If you're seven, if you allowed twelve foot, you would allow five feet on either side.
Right. Unless I'm reading this wrong, but it says actual exterior peak height in feet, ten point five. And that's a sixteen by twelve.
All right, so...
Maximum, maximum height, fourteen feet. That's my law.
Well, we could, we could come forth with whatever our recommendation is to the village board. I mean, I kind of thought that we were moving towards twelve feet, because seven feet appears to be the walls, that's five on either side or five feet. Ah, that seems to, that seems to make sense, I mean, that's, what is that, seventy-five percent of the height? Five feet? Close, sixteen?
Yeah.
That's a, that's a pretty good pitch of the roof.
What do you think, Larry?
I don't think it's necessary to go really high with the, with the roof.
It can ask for variance. I think most people are not going to build their sheds.
Right.
I think most people are going to go down to Lowe's or whatever, some big box store and get that. And they're going to make it easy on themselves. If you come up to this 140 square feet, you need property of 70 by 206 feet or some dimension. So there's a lot of places, I mean, in the Shands place, that's possible, but in the village, where your lots are 55 feet wide, and probably 140 to 100, maybe maybe 200 in some places, off of, off of Fuller, there might be some that deep. They're not that deep, and you have buildings, buildings, buildings. Your backyard looks like Disney World. So I mean, I'm just the type of person that, you know, try to limit that to some respect. So hey, I'm more inclined to go with the smaller, smaller structures. It seems that the 1% of the gross land, obviously everybody who's come in here who's asked for it doesn't fit that, they want a variance. So that seems not to be, to work. So if you go up to 144, that covers a lot of people.
What did you do with the height?
So my height is not the same as my building, but the building my garage built after, and it's totally out coded. It's not, I think there must have been a building there before, and they allowed them to not have the distance to the side yard or set back. It's not, both of ours are not great for set backs. But that's not the issue. That's all that the villages like that all over basically.
Well, the world of Rani, I think they were parroted.
Yeah, they probably were.
With the second story.
So...
If you've got the high pitch, you do it.
I don't, you know, I like the idea that does, obviously if you match the pitch to your house, it looks better. There's no doubt about it. And you did that pretty much with the garage. You know, and it, it looks better that way. But I would rather have people come in with a variance on that, as opposed to saying you could do it this way.
And if you maximize out 192, are they going to come out with a match to the house?
Move that?
Yeah. It's going to get, it's going to get more and more difficult.
I mean, it's a question of the steps. Right. So I think every person...
It depends where the structure was.
Right. I just looked up at 16 by 12, and the height was 10 and a half feet.
Wow, then I'd say our recommendation should come across to be 12 feet. That's a standard that allows somebody to build it, it matches Home Depot and Lowe's. Why would we go anyplace other than that? And it might, it might implement the Amish sheds.
All of those that are out there.
How many, in the times you've been sitting on the zoning, how many shed applications for variances have you seen where the heights of the sheds are, you know, 14, 16? Very few. Because the majority of people, they're buying them, you know?
Yeah, I agree.
So why open Pandora's box about, you know, if they want a real tall one that you come in for?
For variance. I agree. I'm all with that.
I don't think you're going to see a lot of applications where they can...
Are you sitting on one?
And it doesn't include projects, it's just accessory buildings.
Right.
Okay, so does it still maintain our 140?
144.
144.
Yeah.
So it maintains our 144, it maintains our 196, it has a maximum of 12 feet, and anything that steps outside these recommendations that we've put forward comes in for a variance.
You're right.
That seems, and we're not going, we're not going near the setbacks that, we're going to let the setbacks sit right where they are.
Yeah.
Whether they're 5 or 10 feet, they...
5.
Well, it's 5 right now. It's 5.
Right.
That seems to make an awful lot of sense to me. Do we have to do anything with the 1%? Do we take that out of there completely?
No.
Because that still allows for less, provided it doesn't exceed 192. Right, because you may have some lots where something between 144 and 192 is okay. Okay, no, I'm good with that. If the size of the lot can accommodate. I was just trying to see what someone could address with that. So we've got 140, we've got larger lots, there's 192 or 1%. So it's somewhere between 140 and 192. It's got a maximum height of 12 feet, and it's going to stay with the existing or new recommendation for 5 feet on the setback to either the side yard or the...
So I would change anything that says side, street line, or anything to property line.
Right. Okay. Just because that would be something we want in the meeting minutes to go to the village board.
Or right, or the right of way. Property line or right of way?
Right of way line. The definition of a front yard will be to the right of wayward. And then the rear yard and the side yard, it just says, it just says line, we just got to add property.
Right, well, this in the accessory structure has a side street line, so I don't like the side and street.
No detached garage, so...
Just near corner lot. In the case of a corner lot, near to the side street line, have a distance equal to half.
All right, well, that's just saying, near to the front property line and the rear of the main building. That's just telling, basically, it's got to be in your backyard, right?
Right, with the street line...
Or in the case of a corner lot, near to the, yeah, so to the street, it should be right of wayward.
Right.
Which isn't necessarily the street. Okay, so we have to use that one too. So that's right of way through?
Yeah.
Okay. Anything else, Larry? All right, so this becomes our recommendation. Whether they choose to do it or not, that's kind of up to them, a lot of us know. But our rationale associated with it is 140, 192, the peak to 1%, 5-yard setback, and keep ourselves at the street right of way. Or keep the boundaries here. Other comments or thought on that? We went a little longer tonight, but I think it was worthwhile time. You know, for the, for the district regulations, I'm going to have to talk with Aaron because I think the, the front setbacks should be different in, in the, in both... Should be different in the R1 and R2 9.6 districts from the R1 13.6. Generally speaking, the 13.6 are the bigger lots. That is correct. The R1 9.6 is the old part of the village. The R2 9.6 is sort of the semi-old part of the village, I mean, it's, you know, south of, of, or north of Main Street, Baker Street, and those streets in there. But I, I just, but I think Aaron can give us like average, existing setbacks to the right of way lines, because they shouldn't be on, right now it's 40 feet for all of them, which, maybe 40 feet's okay for the 13.6.
For the 13.6.
But not for the 2 9.6.
The older, the older houses are all...
Right, so we got to, and I think Aaron did something where he was trying to figure out what the average front, existing front set, actual setbacks are, in the old part of the village. I just got to get that from him.
And most of the 13.6 don't have a sidewalk.
Right, exactly, right. So we can, when I get that, then we can chew over, you know, what's appropriate. And I don't know what it is, 25 feet, 30 feet, I don't know, we got to see what the existing... But we'll pick a, we got to try to accommodate most of ones that are there now. And you're never going to, you know, there'll still be some variances, but it should, it should cut down a lot of them, if you get rid of the 40 feet in the old part of the village. So I'll ask Aaron about that.
So all these lines just on clear, go from the right of way?
We're going to change the definition to go from the right of way, not from the property.
And the assumption that the sidewalk is at the edge of the right way is not...
The inside edge of the sidewalk?
No.
No, you can't accept that.
No.
Some of them aren't, some of them aren't.
Yeah. I truly believe that in the village, when they put these new sidewalks in, they adjusted that, because they moved it closer to our house. So my sense of things is that they took advantage of the right of way.
My, my, the right of way is one foot inside my front yard from the sidewalk. Because I've measured the street.
Yeah.
Assuming that the center of the street is the center of the right of way.
Yeah. I can tell you along Main Street, especially West Main Street, where they replaced the sidewalks.
Yes.
And it's a bigger right of way for, you know, the state, the road. It was surprising how much of the sidewalk was outside of the right of way. And so Jake had to go to the individual property owner and get easements to allow the side, you know, to keep the sidewalk there. You know, they put the sidewalks in without even, they put them in a straight line, I guess, but that's not, the right of way on Main Street is all over the place. Because the road's been, it's been there for so long, and, you know, it starts at one width and it kept making it bigger, but they couldn't always acquire sufficient right of ways from people. So a lot of times, the pavement goes right up to the right of way, that there's still a sidewalk.
So where's your...
I think, I agree that the sidewalk...
Well, it still exists, which you're trying not to do it, but it's expensive.
So it would be the inside edge of your sidewalk.
That's right. All right, so we'll pick up on the, so I can draft something for next month to change, to show what the new accessory structure one would look like, and the definitions of front yard, rear yard, side yard. And I'll ask Aaron if he could have by next month, some of the averages for the different residential districts in the village for their front yards, so then we can discuss changes to that. Okay? But this doesn't change our 140, 192? No, no, I'm going to...
You can pass that.
Okay, we'll pass that. Yeah, I'm going to, I'm going to...
You're talking about the property boundaries.
Right.
I got you, I'm there.
I'll draft the recommended new accessory structure one according to what...
What we talked about.
Correct.
Got it. I'm with you.
Okay.
Other comments?
I have a motion to be able to adjourn the meeting.
No second.
Seconded. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Okay.
Joe, did you catch all that?